United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois. Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Approval of minutes?
May 20th, uh, yeah, May 20th minutes, please.
Motion by Alderman Massey, do I have a second? By Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, I would like to call the mayor up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Mic on? It's on? Okay. Yeah, for those watching on TV, you missed the opening act. We had the mariachi band here tonight for a special celebration. And that celebration is basically an extension of the Cinco de Mayo celebrations that we had in downtown specifically. So, tonight, on behalf of the city and on behalf of the common council, I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations and sincere thanks to everyone who participated in and helped organize the third annual Cinco de Mayo celebration hosted by the city of Middletown. This vibrant event not only honored Mexican culture and heritage, but also brought our community together in a spirit of unity, pride, and celebration. From the music and dance, to the delicious food offered throughout establishments in our downtown area and throughout our city, the festive atmosphere, it was a true reflection of the diversity and strength that define our city. Middletown is a community made stronger by its diversity, where people of different backgrounds, culture, and traditions come together to support one another. Events like Cinco de Mayo are a reminder of how we celebrate each other's heritage and stand together, especially in meaningful cultural holidays such as this, and is also a powerful reminder to many, so many, that the important role that immigration has played in our city, in our city's history, and moving forward as a city of Middletown made up of a diverse population. So, a special thank you to the Middletown City School District. I know Superintendent Creedon is here this evening for their involvement and their support in helping make this event such a success with the Midi Mariachi Band. As a token of our appreciation to all participants, we are proud to present certificates this evening to the individuals and groups who helped bring the celebration to life. Your dedication, talent, and community spirit did not go unnoticed. So, thank you again for being part of what makes Middletown such a special and welcoming place. And at this time, we'd like to call them up by Maria Bruni is going to help, and Juan is going to also help with the handing out of the certificates of appreciation. So, Maria, you want to? So, Superintendent Creedon, I saw your commitment.
We're doing them too. No. But the, this is on behalf of the Midi Mariachi, presented to the Midi Mariachi Ensemble, and signed by myself and Council President Rodriguez. Miguel, if you want to come down, please do. And just a certificate of recognition, just an appreciation from all of us that made the event very special, and we want to say thank you to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. We have Diana Mars, and Amanda, is it Mira?
Mira.
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 Mira, Mira. You should say Di Stefano, right? Yeah, yeah. So, if we can do the same for Diana first. And also, say thank you to you also.
Diana is the director of the Midi Mariachi Ensemble.
Co-director.
Co-director. And Amanda.
Mira.
Mira. K through 12 Music Department Chair and Director of the Midi Mariachi.
Got it.
Thank you so much.
Can't wait to get them up with them in the schools.
Yeah. He can't wait.
And then now we have the students in the ensemble.
Now, we're going to do the students. So, if you want to stay up and congratulate them, please do.
We'll just switch out and make it about them.
We're going to now call up the students, one by one. Francesco Carano.
She's not here.
Not here? We'll make sure they get them.
She's here. Uh, she's here.
Lisette Rojas.
Yes.
Brianna Morris. Uriel Portugal Cruz. And Yaral Portugal Cruz. Gillian Galdemez. Joseph Galdemez. And Juliana Galdemez. Leslie. Juan said, Moya.
Moya.
Anaya Woods. Kimberly Zambudio. Emily Gil Ramirez.
La Danza Azteca con Guadalupe Martinez. Danza Folclórica Metzli Tonutiu.
Tonutiu.
I don't know this person. Olivia Avalos. Isabella Vidal.
Loreli Chavez.
Loreli Chavez. Danza Folclórica del Sagrado Corazón de Jesús y María. Guillermina. Danza Folclórica Orgullo Mixteco. Jaqueline Avalos. Alejandro Fernández.
And we also wanted to recognize the organizers that were really heavily involved in. First, Noemi Sid from Noemi's Beauty Salon, the businesses. Jose Levanes from Alangel's Cuisine. Thank you. Next, Alvaro Garcia from Garcia Supermarket. And last, Juan Avalos from The Taco Factory. So, that is the last of the presentations, and we're going to entertain you with one more number from the mariachi band.
Mariachi, no?
Mariachi.
Mariachi. Me gusta muy honrado y me gusta lo mejor. Como que ves no el barrio, ni el dinero, ni el amor. Y me llamo en la montaña y por la tierra yo me voy. Y la luna me acompaña y ahí me dice dónde voy. Ay, 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 amor. Ay, mi morena de mi corazón. Ay, 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 amor. Ay, mi morena de mi corazón. Sana mariachi, mi novia. Me gusta tocar guitarra, me gusta cantar el son. El mariachi me acompaña cuando canto mi canción. Me gusta tomar mis copas, a mantiene es lo mejor. Pa' que me dé aquí la blanca con sus alas, amor. Ay, 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 amor. Ay, mi morena de mi corazón. Ay, 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 amor. Ay, mi morena de mi corazón. Me gusta tocar guitarra, me gusta cantar el son. El mariachi me acompaña cuando canto mi canción. Me gusta tomar mis copas, a mantiene es lo mejor. Pa' que me dé aquí la blanca con sus alas, amor. Ay, 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 amor. Ay, mi morena de mi corazón. Ay, 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 amor. Ay, mi morena de mi corazón.
How many common council meetings come with entertainment like that, right? If, with your permission, Mr. President, a five-minute break to...
Yep. We'll take a five-minute break.
A lot of students here that have to go to school tomorrow, and give yourself a round of applause, because you all did great.
All right, we're back on the air for the Good of the City.
Our first speaker is Vanessa Sid.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Vanessa Sid with For the Many and lifelong resident living in the Second Ward, organizing for now the last eight years. I just want to say that I'm looking forward to tonight's vote for Good Cause Eviction on the strongest version. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next speaker is Jairo Perez.
All right, good evening, council. My statement won't be as short as that, but I'll try to keep it short. My name is Jairo Perez. I'm a community organizer with For the Many, 20-plus-year resident of Middletown. Firstly, I want to thank the council and the mayor for the Cinco de Mayo recognitions and those who helped organize the celebrations for it. I am also here to speak in favor of Good Cause Eviction, also emphasizing the one-unit portfolio size to cover as many tenants as possible and to close that LLC loophole that corporate landlords could exploit. I'm hopeful that today's vote will side in favor of Good Cause. To the council and mayor, thank you for keeping your constituents in mind, especially those who are no longer in Middletown because they've been priced out or wrongfully evicted. Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Ruiz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Ruiz. I'm looking forward to the voting regarding the Good Cause eviction. I really like that it's the strongest one that we have in place, and I look forward to how the voting will go on it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bravin Ranga.
Good evening, council. My name is Bravin Ranga with For the Many. I'm going to keep this really brief. Just first, want to thank this council for their work on this issue, in particular Alderman Johnson, Alderman Tobin, and Mayor Di Stefano for leading on this issue. You know, Middletown's about to become the 16th municipality to opt into a strong version of Good Cause eviction. And to be clear, you know, this legislation alone is not going to solve our housing crisis, but it is one of the biggest steps that you can take to protect vulnerable tenants, to reward good landlords, and keep families in their homes. You know, oftentimes, when we have these legislative debates, we can get lost in abstractions or theoretical discussions, but Good Cause is going to have a real impact on real tenants and real community members, and it's for them that I urge you to pass this, and it's for them that you're standing with when you pass this law. I look forward to, after this happens, continuing to work with all of you to ensure that Good Cause eviction is properly enforced, and we continue to enact other policies to keep the city affordable. Thank you again for your work on this issue, and thank you for getting this done.
Our next speaker is Roberto Brown.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to talk to the city of Middletown and really ask the question to our Latin American community, to ask them if there's a real good reason why there's no current alderman that represents them, that truly represents them. This is the question I have for them. Thank you and good night.
Our final speaker this evening is Kevin Gomez.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you. I just got here, but, all right. Well, I do want to express my appreciation to this council, as well as to our city administration, because I think when it comes to housing, this, our council has taken a fine initiative. The legislation that was approved last week, under the leadership of Alderman Johnson, as well as the new housing that the mayor, along with the state representatives, were able to secure funding, shows that we are a community that understands that proper housing requires partnership, collaboration, and taking into consideration the historical makeup of our communities, the concerns of current residents, and the aspirations of future residents. And not only have we looked at affordable housing here, or making sure that nobody's unfairly evicted, but this community, this administration has shown leadership when it comes to first-time homebuyers. And we've seen that with the different Habitat for Humanity developments, and I think that's something good here. We not only want to make it possible for our residents to be able to be tenants with a sense of security, but allow people to become homeowners and continue to make our community one that is for homeowners as well. A place where you could have your picket fence and start a family. So, I do commend this administration and this council for taking the steps in the right direction. And it brings to mind, now, we keep myself within the timeframe, I remember many years back or decades ago, in Brooklyn, there was a partnership between the local churches in East New York, a community that experienced a lot of blight decline, and what's called the NMI housing, named after Prophet NMI in the Bible. And that, the local churches, working with the state and federal government, different parties, different administrations, were able to build housing units for families to buy, become first-time homeowners, and took streets that were once run down and brought back quality, a sense of purpose, a sense of ownership. I think our administration in this city has shown a commitment to make projects like that happen, and I look forward to seeing it continue in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, remarks of the mayor.
Yeah, I try not to respond to some of the comments that are made up here, especially when they're foolish comments, but I'm going to do it tonight because we know it's the silly season. And so, the gentleman that just spoke, Mr. Gomez, I think he would describe himself as a Latin American. He's going to be your new Second Ward alderman starting January 1st, because there's no Republican running on the ticket. One of the other speakers, Vanessa Sid, who spoke earlier on the Good Cause eviction. I had the honor of appointing Vanessa to the common council a few years back, and Vanessa, during her tenure here, it's a short tenure here, but then decided to become a community organizer, working hard for the residents of the city of Middletown. I also had the honor of appointing Mueller Georges to the common council, the first African-American to serve on the common council, I believe, or Haitian-American, and also to the police commission, along with a variety of appointments in the city government. Our city treasurer, Leonora Liz, Dominican. Our HR director for the city of Middletown, Helen Tatis, Dominican. Our clerk's office, our recreation department, both with staff, by office staff, with bilingual people with Latin background. But here's the most interesting one for me, is Mr. Brown is a running mate of my opponent. And I'm not sure Mr. Brown knows that I appointed my opponent's wife, who is Latina, to become the senior director in the city of Middletown more than 10 years ago, around 10 years ago. So, when the public hears the stupidity of comments like that, just take it with a grain of salt. I mean, it's really disgusting. But tonight, I'm also here to speak about some issues, and let me describe my other paper. And by the way, I also appointed Mr. Sierra as a fireman, the first Latino fireman in the city of Middletown, off of the Latino list. And also, to the appointment, as Jerry said, to the ZBA. So, the list goes on and on and on and on and on, but, you know, I don't want to embarrass him too much. But tonight, Vanessa Sid did speak about, and the other speakers, about Good Cause. And as you know, we've been at this for many, many months. A lot of it is working with the chairman of the committee, Paul Johnson. Sparrow, I know, has been involved on a certain level also, and I just wanted to go on the record, since I don't have a vote tonight in this process, to make sure that the public, and you know that I, of course, do support the resolution urging you to support the Good Cause eviction legislation. You know, we had some, a period of time where we were unsure whether we were going to support the most restrictive, I guess is the, maybe the word, down to one unit. After meeting with the Bravon and the council to, to the organization, For the Many, we were able to determine that the legislation does protect owner-occupied housing, where it does not fall under the category, and that is the, I think, the trigger, the last thing that brought us to the support, the full legislation. As you know, the measure is about fairness, stability, protecting hard-working tenants, as been said, and from arbitrary and unjust evictions. Good Cause, as it came out during this whole process, does not prevent landlords from removing bad tenants, or especially ones who are disruptive, damage property, or refuse to pay rent. It's still a process. Tenant rights have, tenants have certain rights on eviction currently, even without good cause, and they get no more rights if they're not paying the rent. It's just an eviction process. But what it does ensure is that people, especially your seniors, working families, and vulnerable residents, have basic protections, such as lease renewal. You know, if you have a family that has a lease for two years and their lease expires, and the landlord tries to shake them down for a huge rent increase, which happened here within the last year in Middletown several times, but on one of the larger complexes, many of the tenants were notified of 40% rent increases. We did intervene on that, and I believe they lowered it significantly, but a lot of the tenants did relocate, leave, but that's at great expense, and I think that's what a lot of people who oppose this don't understand, is that it's not just so easy to pick up all your belongings, furniture, and move. Not only is it hard to find a place that's even, you know, affordable, but also the expense of going through that, the expense of changing all of your mail, your billings, all those things. So, there's a lot to it that if you put yourself in a position of having to move every two years or every year, I think you can relate to a lot of their concerns. So, tonight, I want to thank Vanessa for her tireless advocacy. She's been at it for many, many months, even before we met Bravon, who was a really great advocate for the organization, For the Many, and for their leadership and their continued engagement on this important issue. I also appreciate the landlords who did come and give input, because I think part of that dialogue that we had with them, along with Alderman Johnson and the council president and others, part of that dialogue was, they were able to understand the legislation better, too. They were able to understand that some of the reasons that their evictions are taking maybe six months or nine months is not necessarily the fault of the court or the tenant, but it was the fault of the, many of the landlords were doing their paperwork on their own. And that, once they made a minor mistake on a eviction application, that the time clock under state law has to start all over again. And that's why we were able to sit down with Judge Brockett and Judge Caton, and they assured us on any housing issue, whether it's eviction or whether it's a tenant bringing in action against a bad landlord, that if it was necessary, they would hold extra court sessions to make sure the calendar doesn't get long, because it's also reversed, too, where you have a bad landlord and a tenant has trouble getting action into the court, too. So, that is important to note, that the landlords that participated in it also deserve some recognition for, I think at the last meeting, one of them did speak and said, you know, I have a better understanding of this whole process, and let's see how it works. Wasn't fully embracing it, but at least the communication, which I think we all felt, some felt, that we were dragging this thing out, recognized that we weren't dragging out, we were doing our due diligence. And that's important, because at the last meeting that we had, the legal counsel for the organization stood at this podium and said that... the organization stood at this podium and said that he was dealing with a lot of communities in this state regarding this law, and that this city, the due diligence that we followed, the process that we followed, was probably the best approach to a public policy decision that he's dealt with in any community throughout the state, and he's involved with a lot of different communities. So I commend the council, and Paul, as chairman of the council, or chairman of the committee. Kate, I know you're awarded, has quite a few apartments, especially the affordable housing area. So all of us did our job, they did their job, the landlords did their job, and tonight we have a nice, strong resolution that will protect our tenants from unfair eviction. Bravon also touched on another point, which I touched on at the previous meeting, too, that this is not a cure-all to the housing crisis, that there is still a serious housing crisis until we increase inventory. And one of the things we are doing in the city of Middletown is increasing inventory. We have 100 additional units being proposed by the Middletown Housing Authority, along with the renovation of 199 units. Those 100 units will be under the guise of affordable workforce housing, or some type of subsidized housing, which automatically makes it affordable. We have also, today, we, and I'm going to go into that next, is had the closeout of the downtown revitalization initiative program. In that program, the number of housing units, both created and proposed, are significant. We've also offered many of the developers coming in the opportunity to apply for New York Forward, which would give a funding option to them, if they so choose to go through the New York funding applications, where they can get a percentage of their funding if they propose to keep those projects, not the housing project, but the development projects, their buildings, if they choose them to be, those units to be affordable units. So it takes a lot more than just passing Good Cause. The cause is not over, it continues, developing inventory. The county has finally, finally, passed a resolution and created a committee to address the affordable housing crisis. I know their focus is on the three cities, but the three cities alone are not going to solve the housing crisis in Orange County. My hope is that, for the many, goes into the town of Walk Hill, goes into the town of New Windsor, the town of Newburgh, and other communities where there are large apartments, complexes, and addresses it with the same energy that they did here, and I'm hopeful that they will then pass it. I don't know if the county legislature can do anything in that area, but so far, it's been limited, very limited action, if any, on the county level to address the housing crisis in this county. But it is starting. The ball is rolling, they're putting some money aside, and hopefully, there's going to be some change. And it's, all comes down to protections such as Good Cause, but also protections such as, not protections, but increasing of inventory to bring the prices down, or at least stabilize them. So I hope, I'm sure it will be. I know we've had individual discussions, and I don't believe there's a person on the council that is opposed to it. And so I want to thank you all in advance for your vote. I also mentioned that today marked a major milestone in the history of our city, and I need to thank, publicly thank, the Secretary of State, Walter Mosley, for coming down to Middletown and joining us to officially declare the completion of our $10 million downtown revitalization project, the revitalization initiative. The presentation of the Middletown Revised Mission Complete sign, as you see here, is more than symbolic for us in our community. It represents years of vision, planning, hard work, and collaboration. We were joined today by SUNY Orange President, Dr. Christine Young, the chairperson of the Regional Economic Development Council, that's the organization where the funding was recommended, members of the organization, of the REDC, along with Linda Malav of the Empire State Development Regional Director, many of the bid members, many business members, some of them here tonight, Juan, Alvaro, and Jose, all part of the bid board and the bid district, which was an important part of our application. If you also recall, because it's been nine years, it was awarded in 2016, that our application focused on new immigrants. And I think that application, that's what made our application unique. We focused on a traditional role of cities being home to immigrant communities and immigrant businesses, incubators, as a sort for the immigrant community. If you walk down North Street right now, you will see that that plan worked. You have a variety of businesses, from Latino restaurants, to barber shops, beauty salons, clothing stores, all owned by different people, furniture stores, all owned by people, quote, "new immigrants." And so that was a big part of our application, and it worked, and the Secretary of State was impressed today with the condition of the city, and the condition of the downtown, and the impact that this project had. So I said I wanted to thank the Department of State and their staff for their dedicated work on this project. It wasn't easy, it was, it took a lot of time, it took a lot of meetings, a lot of public meetings, a lot of public participation, surveys, meet and greets. I know Jerry, you were at a lot of them, or probably all of them. I think Jerry's missed one meeting, I think, in 20 years. Is it one? One meeting, yeah, one meeting in 20 years. That's a dedicated guy. Not everybody can say that. So today, we don't just celebrate this completed initiative, we celebrate the community that came together to build something lasting. I agree with the sign, I like the sign, we're going to hang it in my office. The Middletown has been revitalized, and we know we have more work to come, especially in the area of housing, but our downtown is bouncing back, our other business sectors, such as Dulson Avenue, which was also impacted by these DRI funds, because we were able to leverage about $70 million in grants that came along with this. And a lot of that was infrastructure money, sidewalks, curbing, lighting, pedestrian crossings, all those things that make the community aesthetically attractive. But all of that would go up if we didn't have the businesses and the people that were coming down and revisiting our downtown. Twenty, 25 years ago, we were making small incremental gains. We were making gains, but not fast enough. This program, Lieutenant Governor at the time was Kathy Hochul, our current governor, she not only, she practically lived here at the beginning of this project. By the way, she does like her craft beer. So she was a fan of Equilibrium, and we did a lot of stops at Equilibrium. Every time we're in Albany, she mentions Equilibrium, and so we're, my point is, is that when you get the attention of the governor on that type of project, then you know you've accomplished something in your community. And not only was the governor very active as a lieutenant governor, she was also very active as governor in making this project come to fruition. So I need to, and I know that all of the others work under her, so I need to acknowledge all the great work that she did on this, and thank everyone involved. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Any question for the mayor? All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Reports of Department Heads, Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to mention the Community Development Agency, which you are all members of, and the mayor as well. We began that program to create homeownership in our community. So today, we got word the Washington Street home is going under contract. So we're on our way to our 18th, 19th, 20th home. We have two more in the works right now. So we're going to have a brand-new homeowner on Washington Street within, hopefully, six weeks or so, as soon as they go to closing. So we're proud of that program, it's been effective, and we're just going to keep going and creating more housing in our neighborhoods for first-time homebuyers on that, on that spectrum there. But also, we have Juneteenth this week, so on Thursday, join us for the celebration. I want to thank, because it matters 24/7, Yaya Williams. She's been the main organizer, I've been working closely with her, and for the past five years, we've been working together, the city, the Business Improvement District, because it matters 24/7, the NAACP joined this year. So we have a great program lined up. We have, we begin with free film screening at the Paramount Theater, we're showing American Fiction. There's going to be two showings, 11:00 AM and 5:30 PM. Then the Minority Business Expo at Erie Way Park is going to begin at 1:00 PM, that's going to go from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And then the community celebration begins at 3:00 PM till 5:00 PM. And we have Kofongo Dance Ensemble, Ray Simone and Danny Jr., we have The Dance Diamond, we have DJ RP Beats. So it's just going to be a great community celebration. Come join us, our fifth year, we're really proud of the celebration, and I think the weather is getting better for Thursday, so we should hopefully be all right, so. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. We'll start off with our reservoir levels. Alderman Massey, we're at 101%. Obviously, we have too much rain, we need to treat our reservoirs with copper sulfate for algae, and we have not been able to do it lately, so we're going to be one week behind. So hopefully, we're not going to have any problems with algae, but we are on top of it. By the way, harmful algae bloom has already been found through different areas of the state, in the state of New York, so we've got to be very vigilant about it and keep an eye on it. Annual paving program is due to start in this month, on the 25th. We're timing it after the schools close, or shortly after, and so hopefully, that will be, that will be done rather quickly. You know, we left roads milled, a little bit inconvenient for the residents, but that's in order for us to be able to fix them, address the catch bases, manholes throughout, and then when the paver comes, he will do that in short, in short order. The traffic operations, that massive project that we've been working on for about three years, it's winding down. The last work that we're doing right now is at the intersection of Walk Hill Avenue and Lake Avenue, and that's almost completed. And then Grand Avenue across from Twin Towers, that will be completed very shortly as well. And it's all coming together. The thermal liner for the crosswalks, the one that looks like red brick, that's going to be done within a couple of weeks, and that's due to programming in there and scheduling of the subcontractor. And reminder for the residents, just, it was reported to me, I did not see it, some people, they stand by the pedestrian crossing, and they expect the light to change for them. You must push the button in order for the traffic light to know that you're there, otherwise it will not turn for you to cross, because this way, it's designed this way to make it more economical, and we don't delay cars to stop at the red if there are no pedestrians who are trying to cross. So everybody, I said that before, a few months ago, or maybe a year ago, so push the button, please, if you're trying to cross the intersection as a pedestrian. With that, I will conclude my remarks. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation.
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder to the public that our sports camp and Little People Playtime camp registration is currently ongoing. We will be in Sports Camp and Monhegan Middle School again, and Little People Playtime will be held at our facility. And also a reminder, we know the temperatures are going to be high next week, and we're grateful for that, with a break from all this rain, but our pools do not open until June 30th. We've been, when we had those nice few days, we're starting to get phone calls, but just a reminder, not till June 30th. Any questions?
Any question for Bray Lynn? Thank you. City Assessor?
Good evening. I just wanted to report that our 2025 assessment rule is complete, so that's what everyone's taxes will be based on for the following year. And if anyone has a question about their assessment and exemption, even if they want a copy of their deed, if there's anything we can help you with, please come see us. My staff and myself would be happy to help you with anything we can. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. And City Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for the City Clerk? All right. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Good evening, just a quick, I'll be very quick tonight, just a reminder that there's one week till the election, but there's early voting. Please, people, all you have to do is go online, you can see the times that they're there for early voting. This is an extremely important election, we want Middletown to keep moving forward, not to end up going backward. So please consider early voting, if not, then on next Tuesday, you can vote at your normal voting places. But the early voting up until Sunday, and including Sunday, is at the Senior Center. Thank you very much.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Mayor, thank you for that part of your presentation about the DRI process and the money that we received for that, I remember that. I mean, this is years and years and years, this has not just all happened in the last six months. You know, and I remember it started, for me, anyway, I remember, like, when we closed King Street, and everyone was like, why are you closing King Street? And it just sort of set the tone for sort of what it was going to be, and it became a very, between the facade work and just watching all the, all the things that have happened, it's really great to see the progress that we've made and continue to make. And Jacob, thank you for everything with the, with the roads and the ADA-compliant curbs, and, you know, the crosswalks, and the work that we've done to try to help people. Again, not all in the last six months, but, you know, for years, as you mentioned, so thank you, thank you very much for that. It was, it was great to see the kids here, recognized for their work. That, that program, Mrs. Mita and Ms. Mars, they both had, were my daughter's teachers, did a great job, and the work that they do with these kids, it's not a surprise that this year, the Middletown School District received a Best Communities for Music Education designation nationally for the 11th year in a row. So the kids get a lot of opportunities, that mariachi band that, you know, J.C. and her family have been involved in, that started only three years ago, and now they're performing all over the place. And that's a credit to the confidence that these, or these teachers give their children. So one final thing, graduation is June 27th, Friday, at 10 o'clock in the morning. There are going to be, it's right around 610 graduates, I don't remember a bigger number. I asked my daughter, her class was 560-something, three years ago, something like that.
58.
Yeah, so I would, I would anticipate, wearing my other hat, that regardless if it's, if it's raining, I think every attempt is going to be made to have that graduation take place on that day, on that Friday. That's why it's so early, so we have wiggle room to postpone it, not postpone, excuse me, excuse me, delay it. And all that information will be on all of our platforms, so thank you very much and congratulations to the class of 2025.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much, yeah. This is a great day of celebration and a great week of celebration. First and foremost, a very happy 16th birthday to my niece. I'm assuming that's why the police chief's not here, although she doesn't have her permit yet, we're going to need extra patrol out there, I'm sure. I'm just kidding, but I was able to celebrate with her earlier before tonight, so that's a great thing. Also, with graduating, I believe my class 18 years ago was 470, so it just kind of shows you where things have gone in just a little short amount of time. What a, what a great thing to be graduating so many wonderful students from our district, and to have so many here tonight, that we were able to recognize for their accomplishments and their talents, and to have the school district here with our city, and just the part of community that's unity is really what we're here to celebrate, you know, tonight. The businesses downtown and our minority communities, just really exciting stuff with Thursday coming up, with Juneteenth, having the Cinco de Mayo stuff together. I mean, there's just the, no lack of support from all sides of the aisle for this community, and just makes me proud when so many other communities are trying to hide and shy away, or, or... or create division amongst their, you know, their communities of, you know, Latinos or as we have Asian communities around. You know, we're really celebrating that, and we're not afraid of it. And we say, bring it on, you know? We have always been there for our immigrant communities and will definitely continue to be there. And I just want to, you know, say, in the spirit of unity, I can't wait tonight. I believe, hopefully, that we will all make a unified vote and we will have this good cause eviction finally go through. And thank you for the many, for the many years of contacting and, you know, just really your passion has come through and I believe is going to pay off. So thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to thank Chief Awansu for coming to our constituents' meeting. I didn't make it. It's the first times I've been really sick in years. But I thank him for attending, and I heard it was very good. Mentioned the early voting, which started last Saturday on Flag Day. And the primary is next Tuesday, so I do encourage everyone to vote. It's wonderful to see what Middletown School System is doing. As older woman Ray has frequently said, it's just a great place to have your kids, to have them get an education and all the opportunities that are there. It's just really been a terrific, terrific opportunity for families in Middletown. So Juneteenth, I hope to make that. After living in Texas for 15 years in the 60s and the 70s, and Juneteenth is a part of me. So I had many friends who had been celebrating it all their lives, so I'm really glad to see it here and see how important it is, particularly at this time. I want to thank all the people who turned out for the No Kings Rally. It was gratifying to see a lot of young people there. And I also want to thank the Town of Walk Hill Police, who were very, very cooperative and in the background and made everyone feel safe. So that was terrific. To thank the Secretary of State, again, I felt like I might be relapsing today, so I didn't make it downtown for that. But it's, I remember when then Lieutenant Governor was here the first time, she was here on her birthday, but she was still here because that's what was important. So it's been, it's a great accomplishment for the city. Also, want to thank the Police Department for the bus enforcement program they did, the school bus enforcement, and how many people still pass school buses with the red lights on and endanger our school kids. So thank you, Chief, and thank you for that successful completion of that program, and we hope it's ongoing. What I've said, when a lot of people talk about right now Trump being underwater and, you know, wait till the next election, and my question always, will there be a next election? Because remember when Trump ran, he said, you won't have to vote anymore. You'll never have to vote again. So my feeling always was, is that because we're planning a war with Iran? Well, when you look at what happened this week, you can think about that. You declare martial law and a national emergency, and you cancel elections, so millions and millions of people can stand up in this country. But we'll see where that goes. But when they can wrestle a U.S. Senator to the ground and handcuff him in a federal building, and he's a senior senator, and that's his state, and it's the largest state in the Union, and they say he didn't identify himself, surrounded by all these Gestapo-like thugs who don't identify themselves. It's, the idea is to terrorize us, and we ought to carry the signs that say, no stormtroopers, no Gestapo, no kidnapping, no kidding. So I'm glad to hear that we're protecting our immigrants and our asylum seekers, and that's so much of what's made Middletown great for so many years. So I want, just one quick thing. This was part of a letter, and it was on Mid-Hudson News, and I won't identify the person, it was a Fishkill resident, but he said, Trump and Vance are not touching Social Security. They're not touching Medicaid, and they're not touching Medicare. It's all a lie. It's fake news. It's a big lie, period. You know, that's somebody who watches Fox News every day, guaranteed. And how you can not read the bill, not know anything about what's in it, and not know what the Senate's trying to put in now to make it cost you millions or billions of dollars to challenge a federal law? And what the House bill had in it to remove the power of the courts to hold anyone in contempt? So that, you may think that's not Middletown, that is Middletown. That's part of this country, and I'm glad to see people taking back the flag because that's standing up. And opposing fascism, to me, is real patriotism. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Good evening. Firstly, I think we should have the mariachi band here for every meeting because it's just a great way to start us off. I'm new to the clicker, so this is my first go. I apologize if I do this wrong. Mayor, I like the saying, silly season, so I think that's what we'll call it. I'm going to read my remarks because I'm a little upset. I tend to go off script. It's silly season, and the lies and pandering are running amok in the Sierra administration. So let's start with the first one for the day. Flood mitigation. The Sterling Street Sewer Project, an absolute success, in my opinion. This area represents probably the lowest elevation in our city, and our ability to mitigate the flooding conditions there that used to rise over property lines and with our last excessive rain in the last few weeks have only just reached the curbs, absolutely outstanding success. However, Joel Sierra claimed in his Facebook post shown here on May 9th, the project was a failure, and the city misappropriated funds, should have used our 70 million in downtown grants differently. I find this interesting because Joel Sierra ran for Orange County Legislature in 2017 and touted this very project as one of his great accomplishments on the city council. He put it right here on his mail. You can see it right here. So once again, Joel, were you lying then, or are you lying now? He also mentioned the use of downtown grants for flood mitigation. Another lie is, after so many years in public office, one would think that Sierra would know by now that grants are not blank checks for whatever we want. They must be used precisely for the projects they were granted for. Does Joel Sierra not know this? Or maybe he was just absent that day? Another lie that Joel Sierra is currently trying to run away from is his campaign slogan for term limits. He was called out on this lie by Alderman Massey a few weeks ago, as Joel himself voted to get rid of term limits when his time on the council was about to expire. So now the new slogan he's trying to sell is, time for change. I see the stickers stuck over most of those term limit signs. But here's the question, what exactly are you trying to change? Reduced crime? A busy and beautiful downtown hosting ribbon cuttings nearly every week? Popular reservoir trails that bring people here to shop our stores and eat at our restaurants? Rising property values? A recreation department that boasts a plethora of affordable and accessible programs and activities for our youth? Because I could keep going, but I think you get my point. I know of one change in particular, though, that Mr. Sierra has repeatedly mentioned, and that's his high-density housing plan for the former MPC grounds. So your plan is to just pack people in like sardines into some high-rise buildings and turn our once beautiful campus into an industrial park? I'm confused about the vision. And as Alderman for that ward, I say absolutely not on my or Paul's watch. The Middletown Housing Authority has built our residents affordable housing that continues to maintain our neighborhood feel, and they will be expanding that vision. And that is our correct path forward. Paul and I have actively ensured that we protect the property values here in the third ward and have not allowed developers to come in and change the quality of our neighborhoods. Joel Sierra wants change all right, but it comes at the expense of everyone who calls Middletown home. Revenge politics never benefits the constituents. Joel Sierra has an axe to grind with the mayor, and he and his team don't care at what cost. My last word of the evening is absenteeism. Every single challenger to Team Middletown has been a no-show to any and all council meetings, I guess with the exception of this evening, but it's good of you to squeeze one in before the primary day. In addition, they show an inability to do the research for the job they claim to want. If you cannot be knowledgeable enough to learn our past, how in the world can you be capable of leading us forward? And I would quickly like to address the comment made by Ms. Brown this evening, claiming that there is not a Latin American representing, which I find to be offensive and divisionist, which I guess is par for the party line with you. This administration and council has supported and protected all members of this community, regardless of their background, and I take offense to your comment. It is outrageous and inflammatory. And I'm done.
Alderman Johnson?
Now everyone's like to follow me, apparently, so there you go.
I tried my best.
Doesn't really feel that good on the other foot. First of all, good cause. Thanks again for remarks of my seeming leadership role. We made it to the finish line, and I would say, Brobin was my point man, and he kept me on target every month or so. How are we doing with that good cause, Alderman Johnson? And whenever I needed facts or figures, he was always ready to provide them. So it's been a team effort all the way around. DRI, mission accomplished. Wow. Who would have thunk that first day when you were on that competition, shall we call it, where we'd land? Appreciate it. Music educators, they've always had a special place in my heart. You know, my kids all went K through 12 through the system, and I always reminded them that when you're at a concert or a competition, these are the only teachers where the public goes into the classroom and gets to see how things are going. So God willing, good job done for them. Now, yeah, two weeks ago, Alderman Ray and I took an opportunity to talk about honesty and integrity, and I think I already drilled home that the high-density housing, other than maybe helping a developer or two, is not consistent with anything about the past, the present, or the future in our vision for junior campus. Alderman Ray has talked about some things that are misspoken, maybe untruths, but don't worry, there's plenty to go around. So honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom. Okay, sounds good. Thomas Jefferson, yeah, I heard him. So why am I going to make an address tonight? Well, since our last meeting, another attack has been on the Asian community and Fei Tian College. And I'm about to go through some of the claims that have been made by a person, and then I'm also going to use some of the facts put together by the administration of the college, who I will not speak for them, but suffice it to say, they have duly noted the turn of events and how they have been portrayed. So somebody else said something about a lie can travel faster. So let's see some claims. Claim, most of the campus land is owned by foreign profit group, private group. Note the word foreign. A foreign ownership, note the word foreign, group making money on land, speculation, note that word also, and state grants, note that word also. The same tax dollars slipping away into a campus owned by, oh, fourth time, foreign entity that won't even pay property taxes. Well, these are mentioned with respect to Fei Tian, and I want to preface these remarks, I find them not vengeful, which of course is the slogan of the campaign, apparently, not inflammatory, although they are. I find them hurtful. As you all know, I am somewhat affiliated with the college. Some of the people that work there are both friends and colleagues and supervisors, and I know firsthand that it is hurtful to be portrayed in the manner in which they've been portrayed. So there's that claim, foreign, 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 foreign. State grants make money. Huh. Facts. Well, the schools are approved and registered in the state of New York. Oh, wait, what does that say? Domestic nonprofit entities. They are American entities created right here in Orange County. They are not foreign, oh, what? Not foreign entities. Just as background, foreign companies are not entitled to receive state grants. Huh. Well, I know the Speaker has dabbled in public policy, and as Ms. Ray has also pointed out, a grant is not a check to say, go spend it on this instead of that. So I think it's kind of difficult to make money on grants. What's one of the grants in question? Store New York, 1.8 million? No, we didn't have to get to use it for something else or put it in our pocket as money. It was allocated, dispensed, and awarded. Public policymakers know that's how grants work. Oh, claims. Because the buildings are classified as a private school, they will be removed from our tax map, erasing, note, millions in property tax revenue, won't even pay property taxes. Fact. Oh, as a nonprofit educational institution, maybe policymakers are not familiar with the term not-profit, the school's operating typical USA, US nonprofit law and regulations, same status as hospitals, churches, community organizations, other education institutions. Once again, for someone who's not familiar with government policy and practices, we could understand that this could be confusing. Yes, the school's employees do pay taxes, that's true. Well, who else does that? Isn't it all foreigners? Foreigners? Rutgers, Vassar. Oh, where's SUNY Orange? Oh, in Middletown. Where's Toro? Oh, in Middletown. Huh. I guess it's not that unique after all. This is a good one. The building sold for as little as a dollar. Really? This is like shooting fish in a barrel. Facts. The properties were not sold for as little as a dollar. Only two of them were transferred from the city. The others were sold privately. The buildings that we're talking about were in a state of abandonment and disrepair, with a negative value requiring substantial work. Okay, developer, would you like to buy this building for a dollar and then $30 million, putting it up to speed? Huh. No takers. Example, the newly transferred Tuckerman Hall, which we talked about, which I talked about the last meeting, is estimated to cost between $30 and $50 million to renovate and to make it the way it looks on the right. What a steal, what a deal. How much dishonesty can we all take? Oh, another one of my personal favorites. City taxpayers still foot the bill for garbage, snow, police and fire, and road maintenance. It's possible that the speakers may be new to our community, I'm not sure, but here's a fact. Huh. The city does not pick up garbage from the school's facilities, the schools pay for it. Oh. The schools handle their own ground maintenance, including snow removal. Oh. Yeah, we do have to have police and fire because they're part of the city. Oh. Rather than being a burden, the school reduces city costs through maintenance and upkeep on their own. Wow, this is tough to take. You know what? I don't have a personal favorite, they're all my favorite. Claim, benefit, only out-of-state students paying up to $60,000 a year. Response from the college. This isn't good. Enrollment is open to everyone. Schools welcome students from Orange County. The tuition is around $30,000. No, no, wait, wait. Says 60. Maybe that was a misprint. $30,000 is comparable, if not lower, to many of the other institutions throughout the state. 80% of the students receive scholarships. They provide special scholarships to residents? Oh, that would be foreign residents, right? No residents in the city and region. They welcome these residents, and they participate in local not-for-profits. So there's a vision. We feel we've had a good collaboration with Fei Tian, which is going to be Northern College and soon to be Northern University. We think it's a collaboration that has been mutually beneficial. The authors of all these remarks see it differently. I'm not sure they were really that con- I'm not sure they were really that conversant with the facts of the case, but that's okay. Einstein. Whoever is careless with the truth in small matters cannot be trusted with important matter. Thanks.
Alderman Tobin.
All right, I don't have a slideshow.
You want the clicker?
I totally agree with the DRI. You know, just 10, eight years ago, you looked around the city, there was a vacant house on each street, closed stores on our streets and empty storefronts. And now our city, you know, it's, it's hard to see it, the forest and the trees, but if you look around the city to now, our city is vibrant, a vibrant hub of culture, education, music, food, and commerce. So definitely see the long-term results of that, that program. And I'm proud that we're voting on good cause tonight, that we as a city can offer, you know, some common sense protections for our residents and protect them really from, at the end of the day, from the greed of some bad landlords. So look forward to voting on it. Thank you.
New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution this evening sponsored by Alderman Massey, confirming the mayor's reappointment of Marianne Feely as Commissioner of Assessment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing the acceptance of a change to a part-time permanent employee's rate of pay in the Parkinson Recreation Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to the state and municipal facilities program funding and approving a temporary borrowing from the general fund for the creation of a pedestrian walkway and parking lot.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ray, authorizing the transfer of municipal credit card services to Orange Bank and Trust Company and authorizing the mayor to execute related agreements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing the acceptance of Zelle payments for municipal pool admissions.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing the approval of the 2025-2026 SRO contract agreement.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Okay, local law.
Good evening. We have a local law sponsored by Alderman Johnson, Local Law Number 2 of 2025, a local law adopting the good cause eviction provisions of Article 6A of the New York Real Property Law in the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.